I can see Mike really clear. Mike, can you give me a thumbs up if you can hear me? All right, cool. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda, of course, is the consent agenda items one through seventeen. No, excuse me. Call to order first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes in the regular meeting of July 19th. Is there any discussion for potential corrections of those minutes? Seeing none, if there is no discussion, then I will ask someone else to make a motion to accept those minutes as I was not present.
I would be happy to do that. Thank you. I would move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 19th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, the ayes do have it. Madam Clerk, please record my vote as present. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda items one through seventeen.
I would like to pull item number nine for discussion.
I would also like to pull item number six.
Item number nine and item number six have been pulled. Is there any further discussion? If not, then I'll make a motion to accept all items with the exception of item nine and item six. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, the ayes do have it. The chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson for an overview of item.
Nine.
The item he pulled.
Thanks, Mayor. I think we have Captain Nicholson here.
Thank you, sir. Good morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna talk to you guys a little. Good morning. I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about the community support specialists. So they came online in 2020. They provide support and resources to families in crisis and need. They try to bridge the gap on children that don't quite fit. Folks that need to be involved DCF. So what they do is, so we have two non-commissioned personnel, Yativa Robinson and Ally Angle. And they receive reports on a daily basis on all children under the age of 18 who are involved in police incidents. The children that are under the age of 18, they can either, usually they'll just send letters or they may go out. Their focus is primarily on children under the age of 10 years of age. And so and they came online in 2020 and 2021. They provided services to about 2,800 families. As of this year, they've provided services to about 1,700 families. What that service looks like is that sometimes they give out diapers to families that need them. Provide baby formula. They also, I have Yativa in the bag as well if you have some questions to her. I have a kind of a highlight of some of the things that they've done this year. They've referred, made referrals to therapy. They've advocated for clients at court. They've assisted in arranging buses for students due to truancy concerns. Partnered with the Random Acts of Kindness to get items for families in need, assisted officers with DCF history. They're also available 24 hours a day. So I have two support specialists. They're divided up with, by the four patrol bureaus and so administratively. So I think Yativa may have patrols north and south. And she responds to all the children that are needing in those areas. And it really has been a beneficial tool for law enforcement and this community. You know, they are utilized quite a bit. They've made a lot of partners with a lot of community agencies. And they also have a donation account so that folks that do want to make donations, if they want, so that they can use those resources to help people in the community, they also do that as well. So and this was a an agreement that we entered into in 2019 with the DCF. And the agreement expires in, I believe, in 2023, in June of '23. And I'll open it up for questions if you have something about them.
So I didn't have any questions. I really wanted the community to know about, I had the privilege of attending a event over in, first being heard from Yativa and all of the great work they do. And I really just wanted folks to know in this time, as we continue to talk about how law enforcement is serving the community. These two specialists are doing a wonderful job and a lot of what the community has talked about needing and wanting, they're actually doing. And really just wanted to highlight this opportunity that we have and looking forward to supporting it.
Do you have a question?
Just thank you. Next chair recognizes Councilmember Fry.
Okay, thank you. This is related to the Miracle League donation. Really no controversy on this. It's just something that I had the privilege of serving on the park board when the Miracle League field was built at Orchard Park. So I've always had an interest in that facility. It's an amazing service that they do for our kids. And just wanted to recognize Shields for the donation that will allow 100 kids to play this season for free. So thank you, Shields. They're making a great investment in our city with the addition of the new store out in District Two. And so it's nice to see them become long as community partners and help us with Miracle Field. So with that, I just recommend that we accept the donation.
I'd also like to speak on that for a sec. I have a nephew who plays in this league or did this last season. And it's just incredible how it helps people come out of their shell. I love the game of baseball. I think everybody should have a chance to play. And so this program really touches my heart to see what we're doing. And thanks to Parks and Rec for helping with this. And these are just the items that really make me feel good about what we do on a day-to-day basis. So I'd like to recognize that as well.
Absolutely. Any further discussion on this? If not, then I'll make a motion to accept both items. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Puddle. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, the ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Board of Bids and Contracts stated July 25th, 2022.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Josh Lauber, Finance Department. The board of bids for July 25th, 2022 are as follows. For engineering, we have the sanitary sewer improvements, phase four for Schultz-Johnson, second edition. Recommended refer to August 1st, 2022. For purchasing, we have the ferric sulfate liquid form to recommend to defer to August 1st, 2022. And we have the interior and exterior modification of two residential sites recommended refer to August 1st, 2022. This is how to become a vendor with the City of Wichita. These are our current open requests for proposals. And I would recommend to receive and file the board of bids presentation as recommended.
Questions for staff? If there are no questions, then I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommended action. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Puddle. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, the ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember, appointments and comments?
Appointments and comments. Let's start off with appointments. Are there appointments at this time? Councilmember Fry.
Did you want to go? Okay. So last week I told the group that I wanted to name Tim Norton to the Billy McCray Naming Committee. Legal has told me that due to policy 13, it states that they must be a resident of the City of Wichita. With that being said, I think Tim Norton is uniquely qualified to serve on this committee as being a former member of the County Commission for several years. Had a relationship with Mr. McCray, knew him pretty well. So I would ask that the council consider a waiver for this particular appointment for Tim Norton to the Billy McCray Naming Committee.
So I have, would that be a part of the full motion? Like we all do our appointments, but a part of the final motion is waiving policy 13 to allow?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I had two to add to that. I'd like to appoint Malia Mitchell as the District One Advisory Board Youth Member. And Danielle Johnson, no relation to the District Advisory Board One. She is back in District One and wanted to continue to serve.
I'd like to appoint, sorry. I'd like to appoint John Todd to the Affordable Housing Board.
Are there further appointments? If there are no further appointments, the chair recognized Councilmember Fry as this motion, I believe, will be more of a complex motion than usual. And I'm sure that you worked out with legal. So Councilmember Fry, the floor is yours for a motion to accept.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we accept the appointments with the waiver of policy 13 for adding Tim Norton to the Billy McCray Naming Committee.
Second.
Motion has been made and is seconded. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed of said motion, same sign. The ayes have it, the ayes do have it. Madam Clerk.
Adjourned.
Oh, no. Excuse me. Back on announcement or discussion for the good of the body.
Yeah, I had two things. One, I just wanted to know if we could get an update. Last year, we did a workshop on all the work we were doing, like around that Dear Durham program. If we could get an update and a workshop in the future, maybe this fall.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
We had a, I forgot the name of that workshop item, but just what we were doing with law enforcement and criminal justice reform efforts.
If I may, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Councilmember Johnson's referring to the Durham Expendement Program. Staff has been working for the past year, 18 months on a program locally. Coincidentally, City Manager and I had a conversation. Coincidentally, City Manager and I had a conversation with Court Administrator Nathan Emery, and we're preparing a workshop to take place in late August.
Awesome. And then the second thing, I don't know, I'm supposed to break this news, but I'm not happy about it. I heard that there was some extreme damage done to the McAfee Pool over in the last couple of days. And staff will be trying to clean that up, several broken items. And it's just disappointing that we've invested all this time and effort into improving our aquatics facilities. And someone has went and done that damage. And we have to find the money to fix that type of stuff. So I would just ask that, you know, in the community, we try to look out for that. And, you know, if we know someone who did that, let's have that conversation with them. And I don't know what it would cost to get cameras on our facilities, but that might be something. We've had damage at Alea Park, Edgemore now. I think another park we had, just disappointing.
Thanks for mentioning that, Councilmember, because the damage to Alea Pool was unacceptable as well. And, you know, we have such a short window that we can operate these pools anyway. And someone going in there and tearing it up. So anything we could do with cameras or anything to increase security or just some messaging, let everybody know these pools are for you. Don't be tearing them up.
I feel like Troy talked about looking at getting Wi-Fi at some of the facilities so that they could get cameras. So I think it's maybe something I'm looking into because Minnesota got their air conditioner taken out like the first week, so.
And maybe look at creating a program. If it's bored kids, you know, there's a lot of cleanup to happen. And it'd be good to have them out there cleaning it up so they can see the damage that they've done and clean that mess up and hopefully deter them from doing that again.
Thank you, Council. We'll talk with staff and then pull together a staff team that could take a look at the issues you raised.
Is there further discussion?
Yes, thank you. I have intention to appoint Karen Sublett to the Ethics Advisory Board at the next meeting. My appointee has had to resign because he's moving to Nashville. And so that creates an opening. But I just want to give everybody the heads up.
Is there further discussion or announcement? Do you just want to thank everyone for indulging me, participating online today? I do want to thank Vice Mayor Tuttle for running the meetings last week while I was abroad. Just, again, I do have COVID at this moment and look forward to following my doctor's orders and getting back in the office when it's reasonably safe based off my doctor's orders. So I just want to thank everyone for dealing with, I know, the delay. I know how awkward it is to work with someone who's online through this format. Luckily, we do have this format. I actually probably could get the votes if I needed for folks to actually have me work every day from home, I bet.
Aye.
Aye.
But believe it or not, I do miss you all.
The ayes do have it.
Hey, Mayor, how was the trip? What are some highlights, if you don't mind?
Besides catching COVID, the trip was actually really, really beneficial. And, you know, I just, just gonna, and I'll give a more thorough response next week. But just want to highlight briefly the grit of our Economic Development Delegation. First, we went out and, you know, we had Senator Moran with us. We had Lieutenant Governor Poland with us. We had members of the partnership and a credible delegation of small businesses and medium-sized businesses here in Wichita who were with us. And this, again, is the largest airshow in the world, this one and the one in Paris. And it's not just an airshow. I think we think of it, airshows as, you know, a Boeing triple seven doing crazy stunts, which there was some of that. But it's really a chance for industry to get together and to actually get some business. Talk about what we do here in Wichita and contract with folks who are looking for suppliers. So but just the interesting thing is, we had record temperatures, over a hundred degrees in London. And we all kind of shrugged it off, being from Wichita, you know, that's nothing. However, they put us all out, about an hour out of London in Farnborough. We have to take trains. So there's about thirty-five thousand of us out there. And they called off the trains at the end of the day. I guess apparently the heat was doing something to the tracks. So yeah, thirty-five thousand of us pretty much stranded in this area. I was with some of the members of the partnership and we were looking for a taxi, realized that the taxis are going to take a few hours. Went back to our kind of makeshift temporary office space where we were hosting meetings to get hydrated and pretty much grab, grab some finger food as dinner. And our economic development team actually found another business that was in the similar situation and just zoomed right in and went right back to work with this other business that has an interest in Wichita. So, you know, it was just interesting to watch where, you know, there was no negativity. Usually in my experience, when you're in these type of situations, people get a little bit testy, let's say. And frankly, our team not only went back and just completely composed and, you know, at the fact that we're stranded for a few hours, but they actually went back to work from behalf of the Wichita economy. And that was one of the bigger takeaways, I think, was we have folks who are really dedicated to the mission of creating more opportunity for people here in Wichita. And so it was great to witness that just firsthand and to, you know, be as much of a, I guess, as much of a help that I could be as the mayor of Wichita. We did get a lot of feedback that people thought it was an asset to have, someone who represents the city at large. But I will say that just hats off to not only our economic delegation, including members of the partnership, but also Senator Moran and his team who was there. To the Secretary of Commerce, Lieutenant Governor Poland, his team. They, it was really all hands on deck. And frankly, it was cool. Wichita, we think of ourselves as the air capital of the world, almost in passing, because we know that's part of our history. But on the international scene, we are absolutely the air capital of the world, and it shows. People really talk about Wichita and, you know, and this community of aerospace, Wichita's highly regarded. So looking forward to seeing pretty much the results of this, of this trip as we progress forward and create more opportunities for Wichita. But I did just want to give a shout out to the delegation that really persevered. Not only persevered, but turned lemon to the lemonade when it came to, you know, some of the setbacks that we had. So other than that, I hope to give a more thorough update when I'm in person. I'm not sure if every word I'm saying is being distorted because we're doing this over the internet. So but overall, thanks for the question. It was really well done. And I look forward to seeing the results of it.
And Mayor, someone that worked at Textron for seventeen years, worked in the sales and marketing environment. I know a lot of times there's big announcements for Wichita companies and stuff at the shows. Was there any big announcements or anything? Or any talk about sales or anything like that going on there? I know a lot of times there's a lot of side talk going on as well.
Yeah, I actually would be hesitant to comment on that just because I understand that somewhat of the the issues folks have had in different states and is people kind of getting out there with announcements or information before all the parties are ready to talk about that stuff. So.
Well, I was speaking more of the public announcements, I think.
Right. So there might be some public announcements coming up. It won't be coming from me. So my job is to work in the background and make sure we're doing everything we can to create more opportunities for folks here in Wichita. But really good question. It's just, you know, I hesitate to try to do anyone's thunder or God forbid be wrong with an assessment. So but you're right in that there are a lot of really great opportunities that happen at this thing. And I'll tell you, one story briefly is, you know, we're there with a small business owner here in Wichita who's watching a plane just do some crazy maneuvering. And he's, it was him and his business who actually engineered and designed and developed the throttle for that aircraft. And he says he wouldn't have gotten that business, which sustained jobs here in Wichita over ten years. He wouldn't have gotten that business if it wasn't for the Paris Air Show, which, which is, you know, the other, this one and Paris kind of swap each year. So, you know, a lot of the stories of success that I am comfortable talking about are past stories. But I know that we will likely have some announcements and stories of success in the future. Again, I just don't want to steal anyone's thunder.
All right.
All right. Well, with that, if there is no further discussion, then I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting so we can get into our workshop. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that a second? I just heard someone clear this.
Yes, second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. The ayes do have it. We are adjourned. I will turn the meeting over to Assistant City Manager, Mr. Dante Martin, to chair the remainder of this meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor and City Council.